Okay, in December, we set the public hearing for tonight and also we asked for indications of a vegetative screening along the property line, widening the existing driveway for the access. As you recall, we discussed that and the highway superintendent actually liked the one access point, but we talked about widening it to accommodate truck traffic. Parking requirement was set at 10 spaces. Salt storage was to be inside or in contained concrete bins. White noise backup alarms were to be utilized. And the hours of operation were Monday through Friday for the office, 9:00 to 5:30, and Saturdays, 8:00 to 2:00. And Dave was going to put those notations on the site plan to make sure that they were shown as conditions of the approval. And I had since had a meeting with Dave since our meeting in December, I went over those conditions with him and he was going to revise the site plan accordingly.
Would you like to add any comments, Lawrence?
I don't really. All the stuff that Jim just mentioned was addressed and added to the site plan for you.
I'm certainly satisfied that those requirements have been successfully applied into the solution by...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Lawrence, do you have any questions?
This is Ann. This is Ann. I've got a couple of clarifications I would like to see on the plan. One is showing that there would be, I guess maybe this is the notation that's missing, the vegetative screen that was supposed to be shown on Nolan roadside of the property. Also, it would be very helpful to have the delineation of the existing drive as well as what is proposed to be the widened drive off of Nolan Road. And I didn't see on this the marking for the fencing, although I thought that was supposed to be there as well, the split rail fence that goes around the front...
That's already been added. That was approved in the first meeting and it should be included on another, on a different map for you.
Okay, is there going to be a different map?
No, there is the original one and then there is a revised map with additions. I didn't want to add everything that we revised back into the original map because it would have been just a little too busy and cluttered.
Yeah, I can appreciate that. I think the plan we finally approve will be this one. So we may need to have that detailed, Jim. Do you have a view on that?
Yeah, I can make sure we get that by the, or prior to the signing.
Okay, and the other, I'm a little confused about the parking. It looks like you've set up parking as well on the, I guess it'd be the south side of the building. You show parking four spaces. It's near the material storage bin. So you're actually proposing 17 spaces?
Yeah, it's more just the four spaces on the Nolan roadside. I don't really want to utilize that if we don't have to, just so trucks don't have to try to maneuver around them. So the thought is just to put them on the other side and have that availability on the Nolan roadside, just in case.
So does that allow enough road for, or enough space for four parking slots and still you can have vehicular traffic navigate around the building?
Yes, because we're going to remove the split rail fence completely that runs adjacent to the building down Nolan Road. So that's going to open the whole side of the parking lot up where you won't, you wouldn't have to travel around the building. You wouldn't have to get within 20 feet of it.
Right. And I think this is the first time I saw a reference to a trash container, a six-yard trash container.
This is the first time? We moved it, we had moved it from one side of the yard to the other just because it wasn't, wasn't really easy the way it was set up for the trash company. So we put it over on the, let's say the southwest corner of the building.
Is that the shelter logic?
Nope, nope. There, let me see. Maybe she didn't add it back in. It would be right to the right of where it says salt bin. She didn't add it back in. I can get that added back in too.
And you're going to have a two-by-four retaining wall to about the parking that's in the front portion of the lot?
Say that again?
You said you were going to have a two-by-four wall, retaining wall, in front of the parking, which is in front of the building.
Well, yeah, they're going to serve as displays. They'll just sit there, they'll be glued together and kind of sit on the ground, two foot by four foot, two foot tall by four foot wide. They're basically just displays and also a barrier to keep people off the lawn because we tend to have an issue with people coming into the parking lot and then somehow managing to turn around on the lawn. I don't know how they manage it, but they do.
Yeah, I can, it sounds like a good idea.
Well, that's why we, sorry, that's why we wanted to take that whole split rail fence out as well, because we get about 50 U-turns a day and it'd just be nice for them to U-turn a little bit closer to the road and not pretty much have to drive around our building to turn around. I don't know what Google Maps has going on, but we get a lot of U-turns.
Anyway, those are the only comments I have, just seeking some clarification with additional notes to the plan. Otherwise, it all looks good.
Can I ask a question? Are you hauling snow in there, dumping it in the back of the parking lot or in the back of the lot?
We moved a little bit of snow off of the site. Usually, we wouldn't move it to our location. It would go to a location down in Gansburg. But with the storm, as fast as that storm came in, we didn't really have much time to plan. So yes, we moved some snow this year over there. I'm not going to have room to do that ever again, but once we get everything set up.
That would be appreciated.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
I agree.
That would be appreciated. Thank you. And then your storage tents, what is your storage tent? Is it going to be a tent or is it going to be a storage tent?
There will be two of them there. We haven't, we just haven't put the other one up or purchased it yet.
So we're going to put two at the most, correct?
Say that again?
We're going to have just two, no more.
Yeah, if I need more, I will, I'll get ahold of you guys.
Thank you. So we can put that in the plan here?
Yep. Okay.
Anything further? This has been advertised as a public hearing.
Yep.
It came out as effective immediately, based upon the listeners' consent, the decision to vote in favor of the COVID-19 virus. But what's hearing on Monday, January 25th? The town office building 351 Reynolds Road is prohibited by the state open meetings law. Executive Order 202.1, purpose is to hear all parties for or against the operation of landscape maintenance business from an existing building and two in over the road and top of the road. TLC landscaping is proposing to operate landscape maintenance business involving the storage of trucks, equipment, and related materials from existing building. I don't want to sound 57 plus or minus a second person. This is an building in the property were manual unchanged. In addition, a building expansion is proposed due to public health and safety concerns. The public will not be permitted to attend the meeting at the location where board members or department heads or staff will be situated or in any other location. The public will be able to fully observe the video conference meeting and will be able to comment directly to public hearing. Please take further notice that the materials from public hearings are available on the town's website. Take further notice that comments, the comment portion of the public hearing will be sent through Zoom, will be sent through Zoom video conferences of the meeting. Okay, that's one of that one. As with most of the keeping with our public hearings, there are very few ground rules. The two important ones are that if anyone has, would like to make a comment or ask a question concerning this application, they are encouraged and invited to do so. And ground rule number two is throughout the course of this hearing, we will maintain some sense of decorum. With that in mind, does anyone have any comments or questions they would like to propose concerning the public hearing for TLC landscaping?
And again, I would formally ask someone send in a chat request and then I can, to be unmuted, and then I can unmute you and you can speak and you can provide us with your comments. So I just need a chat request if there's anyone looking to comment on this application. Looking for a chat request for anybody looking to comment on this application.
Not hearing anything from the board to comment. Other than those already enumerated? Nope.
I have nothing additional. This is Jerry.
If not, the hearing is closed. Lawrence?
The other thing I would, I would ask you to acknowledge is this is a type-two action. I think a formal acknowledgement to that effect, that it's exempt from the environmental assessment.
So we're not required to do any BAF work?
Correct.
So with that in mind, Lawrence, what would you like to do? I think we're saying two or four of the separate.
I'd like to make a motion to grant approval for TLC to Nolan Road.
Subject to the new conditions or not?
Subject to the, yeah, subject to the conditions, you know, discussed.
Previously discussed, okay.
Just to reiterate what those two, because I believe all the comments from the December meeting were addressed, but we had two more tonight. Delineation of the fence line along Route 9 and a limit to two outdoor storage tents on the site, correct?
And you have no hauling snow in there.
No hauling snow.
Jim, I would also like to have the delineation of the entryway off of Nolan Road. It's hard for me to tell, you know, what it is today and what we expect it to be when it's widened.
Okay.
And there also is supposed to be a vegetative screen, I guess back where the bins are.
Yeah, I have a question about that as well. Because you guys have mentioned now a couple times on the Nolan roadside. Originally, I thought you were looking to have a screen on the backside of the property that is not bordering a road. To kind of screen for the housing that's right there, not from the road.
So we're going to put a little bit along Nolan Road towards the back there for where the houses are. Go over to where that old, the old entrance was, come up through there a little bit.
Okay, we just started cleaning that out today, so that works out well.
Yeah, yeah. If you have that house on the corner of Nolan and Pine Valley, okay, so if you could come up there a little bit, because trust me, it's going to save you a lot of headaches when we do that.
Sure.
Go ahead, Dave.
So you guys are looking for a screening, a vegetative screening, rather, that is behind just where I'm showing the bins, the L-shaped bins?
Yeah, I would think of as where the, you're going to show that salt bin. I think that would be.
Okay.
So that's along Nolan roadside, correct?
Yes.
So it's provision of a vegetative screen along Nolan Road.
That'll get you along past that driveway on the north side of Nolan Road, Dave, that big white house in the corner of Nolan and Pine Valley, is that correct?
Say that again?
The, going on the Nolan Road there, you have a driveway across the street from you and that white house up on the corner of Pine Valley and Nolan. That shrubbery would get you up and around that driveway to quiet the noise down in there, right?
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think we discussed last time that the widening of the entryway and the vegetative screening, because of time of year, would be postponed, I guess maybe till May or something like that?
I believe it was till, I have that. Was it more yesterday, the end of May? Do you have it, Dave?
I don't, I know that we had said May at some point, so I mean, if we wanted to call it the end of May, that would probably be the best for me.
Yeah, I think that's what I wanted.
My notes, the notes I have were that we had conditions that we said were going to be completed by May 15th, and that was that the entryway would be widened to 20 feet and that there would be 10.
Okay, so by May 15th.
We can change that, but that's what we had talked about last meeting.
Okay, so I have a total of six. To verbalize them again, delineation of a fence line along Route 9, limit onsite storage tents to two, no hauling of snow into the site, four, delineation of existing slash proposed driveway entrance, five, provision of a vegetative screen along Nolan Road, and six, install the vegetation by May 15th.
Okay. Motion has been made to grant approval for site planning through TLC landscaping. The conditions to the motion, what have a second?
I can second that.
Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion is made second. Further discussion? Now, we can certainly, so it's both roll plans.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Mr. Bouchard?
Yes.
Mr. Shaver?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Ann?
I'm sorry, I admitted it. Yes. Mrs. Matthias?
Yes.
Chairman Jensen?
Yeah. I haven't said nothing unless you care. Lawrence, is there anything further? Do you have a second?
I'll make a motion that once the miles are presented, that the chairman and one member sign them.
Motion has been made to the, for the chairman, one other member of the planning board to sign, as soon as presented to the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion has been made second. Any further discussion? If not, that is really, that's a question. All the favor, aye?
Aye.
Question, Jerry? Mr. Quibbitt? Thank you. And turn those on the stairway. Do you have any further questions of us?
I have no more questions.
All right, Dave, I'll go over these final notes with you and submission timeframe for your, for your site plan to be signed.
Okay.
All right?
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Next item we have in agenda for this evening is William Smith, Caris Traders. We have one of those.
Let's see. Bill, are you there? I just spoke with him earlier today. Bill?
I'm here, Jim.
And I think we have a mic with you as well. He has handouts. Okay, Bill, I think we're all set and you can, let's see, Mr. Chairman on this one. Bill has committed with a revised plan. I think I sent it around today, just to make sure everybody had electronically, and I provided paper copies to the members tonight. The changes that were made there was the deletion of two spaces, and then he also added hours of operation, no unloading or loading on Route 9, a notation to that effect, and no overnight parking of car haulers. And then we did set a public hearing for this evening as well on this one. So those are the updates to the site plan, and they were done.
But they were completed?
Yep. The opinion is that.
Lawrence, you have any comments or concerns for this application for Mr. Smith?
Well, this is Ann. It's not what was submitted, but what I'm seeing on the property seems that the cars are being parked very close to the roadway as opposed to back away, as shown on the site plan. Can Mike or Bill remark on why that's happening?
Is Mike on?
Yes, I believe he is. I unmuted him. He shouldn't be able to speak with us. Mike?
Yes, Lawrence.
Nope, we can't hear you, Mike.
I didn't, you know, I don't know where Mike is. I know he was on.
He's here, he's just not getting through. Mike, if you can type in and answer, that'd be fine. I can read it aloud if you can type it in. Because I don't have you muted at this end either.
Well, I'm not sure, the snow where they have to plow in the back, but I know the trucks are still getting in there without any issues, so I'm not sure, you know, the site plan, I mean, it's just showing the parking spots. I don't, you know, there's no lines to show a designated parking, but it certainly has...
He says, I will take a look tomorrow. The cars are in the same place they have been since day one.
That still doesn't conform to the site plan, which shows that being quite a ways back to accommodate the haulers coming in now.
Well, the only thing I can suggest is that they have to be moved back as per the site plan.
That would be enforcement action.
Correct. And he further says the haulers don't seem to have a problem getting in.
No, there's been no problem.
Yeah, I think, I think it's an aesthetic issue as well. I think there was a reason that it was put back, those cars were put back so they weren't right at roadside.
Yeah. What's the, this is, how many feet is it from the road edge to the first parking space on your, on your, on the scale of your plan here? I see you have a scale of 13, 16 equals 18 feet, so. How many feet is that back from the road before we should be seeing the first car?
I'm sorry, that, I'm running a line of 75 feet, and then you got back off by a car length from there.
There was never, as far as I recall, there was never discussion on how far you can put the cars back. It was just a site plan drawn, nobody, I may be wrong, but I don't think, I've never had any discussion how far back the cars had to be parked. It had to have a, a truck hauler had to be able to get in and out to load off of Route 9.
Let me, Mike wants to speak. I'm going to, I'm going to give him my cell phone number, see if I can get him on the speaker. Mike, if you can hear me, call my cell phone number, 878-2517.
I guess as a board member of the planning board here, my assumption was that with the scale on that drawing, that where those spaces were shown would be where the cars were parked. I mean, I don't expect lines to be drawn out on the grass and the gravel, but certainly scale-wise, it should be in some type of a indication of where the cars are going to be, right?
That would seem reasonable.
Well, I agree with that, except for the original, the original site plan had 150 spaces, something like that. Taking that whole last row and removing that row, I mean, I haven't, I drove by there the other day. I didn't see where the cars are any farther forwards towards Route than they've ever been, but.
I think, I think the cars are always where they have been, it's just that the drawing doesn't, doesn't show that. I mean, the cars are parked right up by the hydrant now, and we're looking at where the fire hydrant is, and it's way up front, the cars are way in the back, so, yeah, it's the way it's always has been, but the drawing isn't showing that. I think that's what we're looking at, though.
And since this is storage and not like a sales lot, visibility out on Route 9 isn't a huge, as big a priority, so.
I'm trying to get Mike on the phone here, Mike. I have technology. All right, hold on. Yeah, Mike, you're on, you're on my cell phone now.
I appreciate that. Sorry, sorry, this is technical difficulties at my end. I do these things all day. What's going on?
All right, well, we have you on the cell phone.
Okay, great, great. No, I just, I just wanted to say, to add to what Bill said, is, we never discussed anything about, you know, how close the cars... about, you know, how close the cars were to the road. And that also being said, it's a car lot and I don't really want to be, you know, to have to keep the cars a certain amount of feet back.
Ann, did you hear that?
Uh, yes, I did. And I, I guess it meant something to my review that these cars, first of all, we reduced it from 150 to 100 to conform with the special use permit. And I think that if the cars are back from the road, it looks substantially better from roadside than if they're right up at the curb, as they seem to be now and have been.
No, they're not. That's, that's wrong. I beg to differ with that.
They're not where the site plan shows they would be.
They're not, they're not up to the curb. You can't get a car hauler in there if they're up to the curb. So if you're gonna say something, let's, let's be honest.
Oh, yeah, I'm trying. I'm not trying.
Because you don't like the fact that they're not back far enough, they're not up to the curb.
They're not, they're not where they're shown on the site plan, right?
And they're not up to the curb either. And I'll be honest with you. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, that's fine. If I exaggerated, I apologize, but they are not where they were supposed to be. They're much closer to the road than I anticipated with the site plan.
I'll speak up, Bill. I mean, there is sufficient amount of area for the car haulers to pull in and out. If, I mean, if you're okay with, as long as there's area for car haulers to pull in and out, that's what we were trying to accomplish. So if our scale's off a little bit, we apologize for that at our end, but, you know, I don't, I don't, you know, I have a car lot. I don't want to have the cars against the back buffers, you know?
We also, I think in the original scale, we didn't, on the site plan, we didn't have a buffer in the back where we took that back parking spots and used it as a buffer and then widened, I believe, widened the, it was a 10-foot wide access drive. And we widened that access drive to 15 feet. So you're gonna bring the cars up a little bit more. Again, you know, I, I don't know if the snow in the back, I'm sure in the summertime would be easier to bring them back a little bit, but being that...
Yeah, and, you know, we did scramble with that three feet of snow we got too, so maybe things are a little farther forward. That, that buffer zone wasn't on the first draw and, and now it is because it's kind of a natural barrier starting there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think what you're saying is the site plan is inaccurate. Is that right?
Well, I...
Is there a scale on here? I don't obviously see a scale, so...
And, and, and look, this is Jim. And it looks just by your eyeballing this that it's approximately 60 feet, 50 yards.
I mean, fair enough, but I, I really don't want to negotiate how close to the road I can put my cars. I mean, my cars and carriage traders are already proceeding through the road. And it's right across the street. And I don't think there's any, you know, I don't know what's horrible, if there's something that's, that doesn't look good, but let me know. I can change that, but, um, for having a car displaced, like transport lot, I don't really want to negotiate how close I can put my cars to the curb. So, yes, this is wrong and Dex, forgive us, but, you know, I don't think that's, uh, that's very fair.
So if I could just interject for a moment, I'm, I may be a little concerned or confused here. When this project first came in front of us, I, I thought it was pretty, made pretty clear to me that this is not a showroom-type lot. That this is a storage lot for vehicles that are moving in and out. Is that, is that fairly accurate?
That's what I understand, yes.
Yeah, because I mean, right now we're comparing it to vehicles that are, that are on the... I'm sorry, right now we're comparing it to vehicles that are on the show, are on the lot at Carriage Traders, which of course are display vehicles and it's a display lot. We would expect them to be as close to the highway as possible, but I thought that I understood that these vehicles, like, people weren't coming to look at them to buy them, that it was just a matter of, of car haulers were coming and moving them in and out. Am I, am I wrong on that understanding?
No, you're absolutely correct, but from a, from a perspective of marketing and so forth, I don't want to have to have cars off the road. But I, I, yes, I give you my word, 100% of those cars on that side of the road are there to be transported, yes.
So it's like, it's basically a wholesale lot?
Yeah, every car on that side of the road is sold and ready to be transported off the lot. That's absolutely correct, yes. However, I don't want to own a piece of property that I can't decide where I'm putting the cars.
Why don't we just change the drawing? Why don't we just change the drawing? Why don't we put the drawing where the cars are and then, then bring it back and go from there?
Could you say that one more time, please?
Yes, just, just change the drawing and put the drawing where the cars are.
Yeah, fair enough. We just have a little problem, but absolutely, I have no problem doing that. I'm sure Bill doesn't either.
It's just a suggestion. I don't know how, that's, that's my, my suggestion. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but we're talking about different things, so, go ahead, Bill.
Here's what you want me to do. Here's what you want me to do. You want me to move the parking spaces up towards Route 9 more so it, so it looks more aesthetic to what? Is that what you're saying?
That's just my opinion. I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels.
Now, I, I think that the site plan that you submitted is fine. The problem is that you're not abiding by the site plan you have submitted.
Well, here's the, here's the problem. In no due respect, we said, nobody's ever said in any of these meetings, and you keep sending us back to the drawing board, nobody's said have the cars off Route 9 so many feet. What was said was, we have to make sure that a tractor trailer or a car hauler, which 90% of the car haulers that go in there are to carry two to three cars. But with that said, if they can get in there and pull out with no hazard, and that's what they're doing, nobody's ever said, hey, they gotta be off the road this far, or asked to have off the road this far, otherwise, you know, we would have done that. It, it's never been brought up until this time. And you go to a parking lot...
Okay, okay, but...
Just because you have lines in the parking lot, the people park in the lines?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's kind of the understanding, right?
Well, that's, that, well, that's what you hope, but it is that, it doesn't always happen. It means, I, I can take this back and just bring the cars up forward for you.
Well, and Bill and everybody, just for the record, like, these cars have been at the same exact spot for the last eight months or year, however long they've been on the property, so we, they never really moved from where they originally were.
No, that's correct.
Okay, but I think the point is...
It strikes me as a fundamental question to address here. Do, is the board comfortable with the cars being up close to the road or not?
I'm not. I, I, this is what we've been looking at, you know, to Mike and Bill's point, you know, for months. And so I think the, come to understand is that the cars back away from the road. I'm sorry, I didn't notice until a couple weeks ago that there were a few cars up closer to the road.
Last month, we specifically asked for the scale to be included on the draw. Until that time, we had no idea what the plan really was, right? So...
No, that's incorrect.
So now we, now we are seeing that there's, I mean, I don't have the paper copy in front of me. I'm via Zoom here. This is Jerry. I don't know what the, what the scale, what the scale of this drawing is. I thought I heard 13/16ths equals three quarter, or 13/16ths equals 20 feet?
18 feet.
18 feet?
Eighteen.
So I don't know kind of what scale that equates to. I don't have a scale that works like that. You know, it's a CAD thing, I'm sure, that you can scale to whatever you want. But when I look at the site plan, much like with every other applicant that comes in, we expect that things that are shown on the site plan are, reflect what's there in reality. So, I mean, personally, the most important thing to me is that the car carriers are capable of getting off the road safely. But, you know, I mean, you, you can sit there and park about, you know, we haven't given you proper direction. I do drawings for my living, and if I submit a drawing that doesn't reflect what I need made, it comes screaming back at me pretty quick.
What, what I'm saying is, the original drawing, which was done by Bill Rourke, showed the cars back, back off the road more. In this drawing, we show the cars more forward. If you have both drawings, if you have the original survey with, I think it was 150 parking spots, I don't, I don't know if it's 150 or 154, whatever it was, it shows the cars back against the fence. And then halfway around the garage were cars. This one here, we pushed them forward more. So, you know, who's really, who's really measuring off the curb or off Route 9 how far back these cars? Has anyone gone over and measured it and said, I mean, you're just going by, by somebody driving by saying, I think it's far forward? Has anybody even, has anybody even measured this? Is this just something like this, you know, falling out there?
Okay. Okay, so let me, let me put it this way. The, the site plan that we have, that we're looking at right now, the one that, that we're being asked to consider in our public hearing and for potential final approval this evening, shows the front edge of the road, line of cars closest to the road to be about 130 feet from the back line of the property. Is that where they are right now?
I don't know. I don't have it, I wasn't over this.
Don't answer that question because I don't, I don't have a, a different answer.
Okay, no, and, and the only reason I'm saying this is that that's the whole point of a site plan, is we're being asked to approve a particular use in a certain way, and we can't, we can't in, in good faith do that approval if we are to believe that the site plan that's drawing in front of us is never going to be filed. If it isn't going to be this, then we need it to be drawn to be what it is going to be.
I understand. That makes, that makes sense. I think, I think what happened here was a lack of communication because we were just kind of showing how many cars we were going to have on there, not where they were. So, let me ask you guys this question as a board. Are you okay if we revise our spots where they're located? Can, can we move forward from there? Because I, I do, I, I don't want to have to worry about how many feet back my cars are from the road. So if, if we change, I, I understand the problem is what you're looking at and you can't approve something that you're not looking at, but if I change that, do you guys approve it?
I'm sorry, that was, I, I only got half of that.
He, he's asking if he changes the drawing to reflect what's, what is actually occurring, is that acceptable?
And the question is, what is actually occurring?
Well, I guess if I could start with this, does any, does anybody know how deep this lot is?
Yes, it's, uh, 106, 66 and 106 feet, so... 170...
172 feet?
Yep. Yes, it's a...
So I mean, technically, to follow the current plan... So to, to follow the current plan that's in front of us, the one that we're looking at right now, we're looking at the front row of cars being approximately 40 feet from Route 9. I mean, is that out of the question? Is that something that's, that's not possible to work with, or... I mean, that seems substantial to be able to get a car carrier in there. I think 40 feet is more than adequate for that. So I understand if you want to make it smaller, but I'm asking if that's, if that sounds like the situation that we have at hand right at the moment.
I, I can't answer that, I'm sorry. Mike may.
Okay, okay.
Hold on, we got, we got several people talking at once. Mike, Mike Romeo, go ahead, please.
I'm just wondering if, what question was proposed to me because I didn't hear it at the moment.
Do you want me to rephrase it?
Yeah, I just didn't hear it, so go ahead.
Okay. Well, if the, if the lot is 170 feet deep and the front row of cars on the plan we have in front of us is 130 from the back, is it unreasonable to consider that it's okay for the front row of cars that you have to be 40 feet back from Route 9? That's obviously more than adequate to bring a car carrier in. All right, but is it out of the question to be able to put them there?
I don't think it's out of the question, but I would probably want to put a tape measure on it and just look at what it looks like before I agree to that.
Of course, of course, I understand that. Yeah. I mean, I'm assuming 10 by 20 spaces for the cars.
Yeah, but we have to remember that it's two, there's two driveways, two driveways as well. They wanted 15 feet.
Right, so you have 20-foot buffer in the back, 30 feet for the driveways, 50.
Yeah.
You have 20-foot buffer in the back, two driveways of 15 is 30, so there's 50 plus your, your two rows, your double rows of 10 by 20s would be 80 feet. 15 and 80 is 130 with 170-foot deep lot. You're talking about 40 feet between Route 9 and the front row of cars. That's what's drawn in the drawing right now. That's what I'm asking is, is that unreasonable? And if that's unreasonable, then we need a different drawing, one that reflects what is reasonable. And then we have to judge the, the proposal based on that. Does that make sense?
I don't think you're unreasonable at all. I don't think you're unreasonable at all. I would just like to actually put a tape measure on it.
Of course, and I think you should. I mean, you need to make sure it works for you, too.
Sure.
So you're proposing 40 feet off of the, off of the Route 9, correct?
No, I'm, no, I'm not proposing that. The, the site plan we have in front of us proposes that.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to find out if that's going to work, and if it's not, then we need to resubmit a sub, or a site plan that does reflect what will work.
Uh, this is Mike again. If I could ask, what if, what if we propose a plan saying that we could park cars wherever we want on the property? You know, and again, I would abide to all the rules that are on this ground with no exterior signage. I'm not selling cars off the lot, but what if we proposed that to you and it, and it was irrelevant?
So you want to put in like, what you were proposing would be there'd be a certain number of cars? And then there would be a certain amount of space provided for car carriers to come in and out? An ingress egress plan, just showing how they could come in and out, and it would work, right? And then you can park them wherever you want?
See, in, in my mind, this is Jim, I, I don't think there's any, there's any magic to the fact that the car carrier has to be unloading in the front portion of the lot. I mean, you could have cars parked right in the front and the, and the car loading and unloading could occur in the rear, you know, somehow. That's up to the applicant, how he wants to lay out his own lot.
Of course.
Right now, it's showing the, the delivery areas in the front, and so there's no room to park cars. If he wants to shift that delivery to the back, or unloading area to the back and park cars in the front, that's up to him.
Right. Well, that's what I was kind of, I just want to make sure that what we have for a plan reflects what is going to be done. Well, that's why I was kind of, I just want to make sure that what we have for a plan reflects what is going to be done.
Fair enough, fair enough. And I think that, that that was just worded better, better than I did it, so. If we could propose maybe that the cars can be closer to the road if we want, but there's always going to be a egress for the, the trucks to get in and out, then that's, that's what I would like to propose.
So then that should be reflected on the map?
See, from, from my standpoint as staff, the fundamental issue I've heard is we need to have a, a safe means for the big trucks to, uh, leave the highway and enter the highway, so they can't be delayed in getting into the site. So if you move your unloading area to the back, again, that's up to you, and want to park cars in the front, or you want your loading area in the front, and park cars in the rear. I, I think you have to commit, though, to an area in the site that you're going to do your loading and unloading, and then park your cars around that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate the perspective there, because that makes sense, but it's kind of like, what if we, uh, you know, changed the, where we put the cars and everything? I mean, I, we're always going to keep it safe, but I just don't want to pigeonhole myself, I guess. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Well, I, I, and I understand that, Mike, but at some point, I don't think it's unreasonable for, for you to commit to a loading and unloading area.
All right, well, I, I would say if we did that, I probably would, I, I probably would say that the rear would be the loading and unloading there.
Yeah, I mean, that's your call. I'm just saying, I, you know, to, you know, what, what the board members are saying, at some point, we have to have a site plan we can enforce, you know, and, and, and it reflects what's happening in reality. We just want to get there.
Mike, why have you not been unloading in the rear? Why have you not been unloading in the rear today?
Because it's easier to unload in the front, but I, I don't want to have to sign something that says I can't put my cars against the road if I want to.
So I, I'm going to ask the, the question that's the elephant in the room. What would the, the imperative be to put the cars right up by the road? If you're not actually trying to market them to the highway traffic, what, what is the, the expectation or need to put them up closer to the road? And you don't have to answer that. I'm just, I, it, it's just a curiosity to me.
From a marketing perspective, to have more cars, you know, i- if you have cars against the road as opposed to not against the road, and if I'm buying a piece of property, I just want to be able to put the cars where I, where I want?
Mike, I guess, is, is there ever an opportunity that this is going to turn into a sales lot?
Uh, possibly. I, I wouldn't want to say it's not, but right now, with 100% certainty, it's definitely not a sales lot. But down the road, 100%, it could, I could petition you guys to, to let me make it a sales lot, yes.
At that time, you could actually change the parking of the cars, right? You understand that?
Yes, I do, yeah.
And I, and I don't think there's any.
Well, I just, you know, I, I just, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I, I, it's tough buying a piece of property and saying I have to have my cars X amount of feet off the road. Especially if we have a safe egress for the, for the trucks. Which I understand that would be out of the plan we proposed to you.
Kind of sounds like you need a site plan showing us you're going to put cars along the edge of the road.
Yeah, fair enough. I think you're right. And, uh, maybe, maybe I'll get that done, and we'll have to do this again and see if you guys approve that.
God, I hate to do that. I just. I guess my thing is, is I really, I can feel the frustration you have with, here we go, another month. All right, and what we have in front of us right now, from my perspective at least, I like the plan. I think it works. I think it flows for what you say you're doing right now. So I'm, I was actually ready coming in tonight to do a public hearing and move ahead with this and get approval done on this, as it sits right now. Okay, and, and if you were to do that, you could certainly come back later in the future and say, I'd like to now start using this as a direct-to-customer sales lot, and I'd like to be able to park cars up by the road. And I don't know that anybody on this board, I won't speak for everybody else, but I don't know that anybody on this board would say, hey, a car lot shouldn't have cars up by the road. All right, so I, I guess, I mean, if you want to do that, if you want to go ahead and wait till next month and come back with another plan with the cars marked now showing it out by the road, which doesn't seem to have been your original intention, or you would have already had them parked right out by the road. We were just trying to make sure that the site plan reflects what you're doing. I mean, it's up to you. It's your plan. It's in front of us, and you're certainly welcome to change it if you wish. It just seems that if this works for what you're doing right now, all we're looking for is to make sure that, that what we're looking at is what we're going to be doing.
Sure, I, I understand. So, yeah, I, 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 just like you guys wouldn't want to sign something on the comm, neither do I, you know, and, and I'd rather just have it, have myself open to do whatever I want, um, with, with the property that I'm purchasing, so. You know, I don't want to make it more difficult. Believe me, I don't want to come back and do this again either, but I also don't want to say, okay, and then when I have three cars on the road, I'm getting a knock on my door from somebody saying, get those cars off the road. You know, I, I don't, I just want them to get, so I can put the cars wherever I want. And we, we were never, this, this has never come up. And I know that's Bill's, that's what he's frustrated about right now, because we've literally never talked about where they were. It was more about how many, and we agreed to a number, you know, which is fine, that we all agreed on it, but we, we never talked about where they could or couldn't be, but I get where you guys are coming from, that this is what we proposed, and it's not what I'm saying we're going to do. So, if, if I need to redo it, I'd rather wait another month or two months, whatever it is, and make sure that I'm not going to get in trouble for parking cars where I want on my property.
That's, that's the thorough way to do it. That's very thorough. That's the best way.
Sure, I'm not trying to be difficult again. I, I just don't want to sign something and then get in trouble, you know?
Yeah, well, this, this is Ann. I, I, like John, would have approved the plan you submitted today. I think the setback that, that we've seen is appropriate for the use and for that location.
I hear you, but we don't even have an actual number for that, and where, you know, again, like, to look at the map, on the, on the south side of the road, what if I want to put five cars up against the road right there that has zero effect on the tractor trailer coming in and out? And, and, and I'm told I can't do that, because I just said okay tonight. You see what I'm talking about, Ann?
Well, yeah, yeah, but I guess I, I would have to see another plan that shows what it is you intend actually to do there.
But you, I guess, I guess I'm a little concerned that, so the, the next plan we're going to see is still going to show that vehicles are parked in certain locations, right? Or no? Is it just going to show a general area, or?
What, what, what?
I'll, I'll get involved and creatively put the cars where, where, where they need to be, I guess.
The thing I'm hearing is that you've got more lot area than you, you do cars to park, because you're at 100 car limit. We, we can't adjust that. That's part of the special permit. So you have options as to where you, as a practical matter, where you can park 100 cars in this lot. What is less optional is the unloading and loading area, because it is a, a bona fide justifiable concern for a planning board, and that's the safety of that truck getting on and off the, off the state highway. So I think you do have to commit to an unloading and loading area. You could show a bunch of different options for parking 100 cars scattered all over that lot, but I do think you need to commit to a, a loading and unloading area that is going to be safe and operates well.
I, I agree 100%, and we just haven't. We, I didn't, Bill and I didn't think we needed to address that as far as where they are, and maybe that's on, on me, but I, I can do that.
I, I just want to say where the cars are even now, and I know they're staying up closer to the road. I've never seen a problem with those trucks getting in and out.
Well, that's my point. That's my point.
So there's, there's plenty of room for them to do, to have the cars up there and still be safe with loading and unloading in the front. So, but again, I've never seen a problem there, and I, and I agree with that, Rob.
Well, Mike, that was kind of my point, is doing the math quick, coming from the back of the lot, there's 40 feet in the plan that shows for those car carriers to come in. And a three-car carrier doesn't need 40 feet of turning radius there. They should be able to get in and out in 25 feet.
Yeah, and, and they do.
And they do. So I guess that's all, I think that's all that was being asked, was that the map reflect what's going on at the moment? Or what is expected to happen? So I, I, you know, it is what it is. I was kind of hoping to approve it tonight and move it off the agenda.
This is Jerry. I'd like to ask you a question.
Again, I'm not being difficult, but if I parked six cars on this, on this south end, the, the south end of the lot, against the road, would, would somebody knock on my door and say, you can't have those cars there? Zero bearing on where the trucks are coming in and out, because they can't physically touch the cars.
I guess if you're, I think what you were proposing was to move, put them there when you've got a carrier coming to pick up cars and put them there. You could put that as a reflection on the site plan and say, this is where, you know, vehicles that are to be removed will be temporarily parked until, you know, loaded or whatever. You could actually draw that in without even parking spaces. Just put an X and say, this is where they'd be lined up to get put on a trailer. And that's still, and you can still stick with the original plan that you had.
All right, that might work if you want to, if you want to do that.
I understand staging stuff. I mean, that makes sense to stage your loads and have it sitting there waiting for the car carrier to come. I mean, the, the main thing is, Jim keeps repeating, is we want to know that the truck and trailer can get off of Route 9. We don't want them loading on the apron. We don't want them loading on the shoulder. We want them in behind the, um, the curbs.
Sure, and I think nobody wants that more than me, because, you know, if something happens, it's going to come back to me, right? You know?
Of course, of course.
The last thing I'm trying to have happen, you know?
Of course.
Okay, so this is Jerry. I have some questions. I'd like to just make sure, before we burn another 30 days and, and leave people miscommunicating again, so. I'm hearing that if, and please correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, Mike. I'm hearing that you'd like to submit a plan that basically gave a general area that you would be allowed to park cars up to 100 cars, and how you choose to park them in there is your decision.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. And then there would be an area defined as the loading/unloading area for car carriers?
If you guys require that, yes.
Okay, so, and you, and you have stated you'd like to be able to park cars, like, basically right up to the property line? Hello?
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
Okay. So then I'm going to, I think as part of the discussion, we would probably be well-served to spend a couple of minutes of it here, is, are we as a board comfortable with a plan that looks like that?
I guess, Jerry, if I can just interject for one second.
Yep.
Okay. And, and I'm going to ask the applicant just this one quick question. We, we just got done discussing a staging area up by Route 9, where vehicles could be parked up there. You know, we're not talking 100 vehicles, we're talking or even 30 or 40 vehicles, but five or six vehicles that are going to be loaded out or whatever could be parked up along. You said the south section would work?
Well, do you guys want that map in front of you, the copy, the map in front of you?
Yes, yes, I do.
Against the road. Yeah.
Okay. So what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to get this thing approved tonight. So if we could say on a condition that the map would reflect that there's an area there in the south end, I would say south of the entry driveway, there's a power pole there, there's a fire hydrant, but otherwise, south, that south end, that that area could be used for staging vehicles for loadout? Can we then stick with the map that we have? Would the locations of those spaces work as they are? Or is that just off the table because you really need more flexibility going forward?
Well, no, I, I would say, can you, can you also say, it looks like there's probably four spots to the north of the other electrical pole? If you could, if you could, if you guys could agree on that, that would be fine with me.
So what's a number of spaces along the road that you would be okay with? That would work for what you need to do?
Based on this map? Based on a scale that we're looking at, it looks like the south side could fit cars on the south side, and let me know if you guys disagree, but based on the size of the scale, eight, and then maybe three or four, let's say four on the north side of the electrical pole.
Okay, so on either side of the entrances?
Correct. It has nothing to do with the safety or the, the coming and going of any trucks.
Absolutely. Okay, so here's my proposal. So we can actually get this thing cleared off. If we put that in as a stipulation, if the board approves of this idea, and we put that as a stipulation, that you have eight spaces on the south end, four spaces on the north end, to stage vehicles for, for haul out, okay? Then would you be able to use the dimensions that are shown, everything 130 feet from the back line? Okay, for parking everything else and still have room to be able to come in with haulers in and out egress safely?
Yes.
We can make that a stipulation if the board approves of it. We can make that a stipulation. We can move this process forward and be done tonight. How does that sound?
I'm good with that, if you guys are. Yes.
Okay. So now I guess the question is, how does the board feel about that?
I'm okay with that, Joe.
Now, these are, these are above and beyond the, the 100 spaces. These are not part of like an additional spaces. These are, there's still only 100 vehicles allowed on the lot. It's just these would be allowed for optional parking for loadout.
I say so long as they stick to, uh, the 100 total, and there probably should be some reasonable safety setback from the roadway. I'm not sure what that would be. Perhaps, Jim, you have some idea?
You mean, uh, save the distance for some fresh cars off the road?
Yeah.
I think there's a curve there anyway.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's a four or five foot wide curve there.
Yeah, as long as they're behind the curb, I think it's okay.
Okay.
That would be my, that would be my, uh, input as well.
Okay.
I take that back. By the map, it doesn't show a curve there, but we could certainly put a stipulation in that they have to be back the distance to the curb.
I'm not going to put them on the, on, on the road. It's going to be a safe distance. I'm not going to, you know?
Of course, of course. We just need to see it, that's all. We just have to know on the map that that's how it's designated, so.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you look at the map, where that line is, it, it looks like it's probably a foot or two behind where the curb stones are. I would agree with that, so they're going to be behind where a curb stone would be if it was on the road.
Okay, so if this gets approved tonight, you're going to have to bring a set of milars in to be signed. That set of milars should reflect that area, whether it's X extent, or you have spaces marked, probably have spaces marked as loadout parking, eight spaces on the one side, four on the other, if they fit. Okay? And we can approve it conditionally, and then the milars can reflect the, the conditions that are put on the approval.
Okay, I'm good with it.
See how easy that was?
I'll make some coffee. Does anybody want any?
Yes. Actually, good luck.
So is the, is that proposal then to show more, that proposal would show more than 100 spots on the plane?
Well, I think those. So I think those, Jerry.
Show more than 100 and we would have to notate that it's still 100 car lot.
Well, I would actually, I would request that those spaces, there's 12 of them, be listed specifically as, as temporary loadout parking.
I understand, I understand that, but I would like to make sure that we, we, everybody understands that the limit, we're still acknowledging the limit of 100 cars.
And that whole thing is already on the plan, Jerry. It's in the fourth line down, I think.
I understand that. I don't want to have it where we show 112 spaces and we say there's only 100 cars and there's confusion.
Jerry, would it be better for us to just show a shaded area without spaces delineated? A shaded area for up to eight cars on the one spot and up to four on the other?
I would, I probably, I would go back to the, I mean, at this point, I'm starting to wonder, what's the point of showing the spaces? I gotta be honest.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, any of, it's, what's, what's the conditions? We want the safe access, ingress, egress for, for loading for the car carriers. And we want to make sure there's no more than 100 cars on the lot. You know? There's a million ways he could do that. Maybe not a million. I'll take that back. But there's got to be 100 ways he could park these cars in here and meet those requirements.
I'd still want to have the stipulation of the 20-foot buffer in the back between the commercial and residential area.
Oh, I understand that. I'm saying even in, in the available area.
Right.
There's, you know, a, a lot of ways he could decide to park cars in there and still meet what he needs and what we want, which is 100.
That's why I said what I said earlier, that the real principle thing that needs to be worked out here is where's the loading and unloading area? After that, the cars can park anywhere.
Right. Which maybe the answer then is to just say that this, this plan presents one acceptable option. But I don't know the right wording for it.
Yeah, I think John was trying to make a proposal that we could act on tonight. And if we keep the site plan that we have in front of us and allow a slight modification that allows the staging, then we're still adhering to, you know, the site plan that we've been looking at for a couple of months. And I do think there's something said about aesthetics, having it back from the roadway.
Yeah, and that would probably be setting, just maybe including some, some setback. If you agree with it. I'm with you.
I'm just trying to find a way forward, to be honest.
I think the agreeable setback could be behind where the curb stones currently are. Does, does anybody disagree with that?
That's just for the cars you were going to stage?
So we're not going to load any of the other cars until the cars are staged? Is that what we're saying?
No, no, I wouldn't. I wouldn't say that, Mike.
Okay. All right. We're still going to be able to load all the other cars too?
Of cour-, of course. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
And I understand Jerry's concern if we show 112 spaces, but we're only allowing 100 cars. But I think with the stipulation of only 100 cars, we can allow the flexibility, those 12 in the front, with the knowledge that it can't exceed 100 total.
Yeah, I'm good with that. I want to make sure everybody understands.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And, and that makes sense, Jerry.
I think though too, we should keep in mind that what we are really approving here on the site plan is the use that, that they're looking for right now, which is the storage lot, right?
Right.
We're not, we're not really looking at it as any future use. We are, we're looking at it for what they are proposing to do or what they are doing right now.
What they're approved to do right now. Yes.
Yes.
Good morning. Anything further? Well, as you have heard, I have a hearing concerning this project. And that affected immediately based upon notices of health advisors issued by federal, state, and local officials related to COVID-19 virus. A public hearing on January 25th, the Town Office Village 5100 Road, Road York, where a store against a control of storage of up to 100 automobiles from an existing, vacant existing lot at 1714 to 1718 Route 9, Town Road. Terrorist traders have been dealership is proposed to use reference lot for storage of up to 100 automobiles and light trucks on the 12218 West St. Percy. No sales are proposed in this location, appropriate strictly for temporary storage of vehicles. Due to public health and safety concerns, the public will not be permitted to attend their local location for board members or department head or staff who be situated or in the other location. The public will be able to fully observe video conference meetings and will be able to comment during the public hearing. If they determine that the video of a public hearing are available on the website, don't interrupt. Please take further notice. The comments, the public comment portion of public hearing can be sent through Zoom video conferencing. And if you have a computer, tablet, or smartphone, you can press your log in and use the video and hear the audio of live sessions. Entering access is going to be through Town Road, planning more agenda ASB and clicking on join a meeting. Entering meeting ID 81451135205, number, and I call the Zoom meeting in 19292056099. I'm from it. Enter meeting ID 81451135205. As it came into all of our whole experience, if anyone has a comment or would like to make, add a concern or make a comment concerning this application, you are encouraged and invited to do so. We have just two basic protocols. And number two for that is throughout the whole course of the process, we will maintain some sense of decorum. With that in mind, is there anyone who would like to make a comment or ask a question concerning this proposal filed by Mr. Smith?
And if that is the case, um, please raise your hand or send a chat request in and I will unmute you and, uh, and you'll be able to participate in the hearing.
Not hearing any.
Nothing's coming through.
No one's come through?
Nope.
The hearing is closed. This, I believe, is not subject to any further review and secret.
Correct. Something to action.
Is, or to give you the last opportunity to ask some questions or concerns for this applicant for the William Smith terrorist traders on the storage lot?
I guess I would ask Mike and Bill to confirm that they are agreeable to what John Arnold proposed.
Mike, are you still there?
Mike, are you still there? Yeah, I'm still here. Yes, yes.
Did, did you hear the question?
Yes, you're just asking if I'm okay with, with the eight and four spaces in the front?
Yes.
Yes, I am. Thank you. Did, did you guys hear that? I'm fine with it.
Did you all hear that?
Yes.
Yes.
Saying that, what would you like to do? No, we can't go home yet.
Have we closed the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure we did. Do we have any? We have, I'm sorry. We have a, we have a condition or condition on any approval motion to be made. And that condition is that the site plan, um, the final site plan that milars are produced for reflects the addition of, uh, an eight-space loading area. And I, I don't know, it would be the southwest corner. And an eight-space loading, well, load parking area or staging area on the northwest end.
You said it was four again.
I'm sorry.
Like you said, it was four, eight on one side and four on the other.
Yeah, that's what I thought. That's what I just said. Maybe I forgot. Well, you said eight on the south and four on the north. I'm sorry. My mistake.
Thank you.
And that otherwise the site plan reflects?
I believe the law was in motion to approve the specific conditions to the motion. Do I have a second?
I'd also want to add that there have never ever, there would never be more than 100 cars parked, notwithstanding the staging area.
Yeah, that should be reflected on the plan. Yep.
I'll second it. I'm Jerry.
Jerry.
Good day. Motion been made and seconded to grant approval to William Smith Carriage Trader Storage Lot, 1714 to 1718 Route 9. With certain conditions, motion has been seconded and further conditions. Any further comments? I'm going to put you. If not, would you call her over?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Mr. Bouchard?
No.
Was that a no?
That was a no.
Mr. Shaver?
No.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Is it Mathias?
No.
Chairman?
Luckily I will say hi. I have 43. Is that correct?
Yes.
The secretary is incorrect. 4839.
May I ask, may I ask those that said no, what they, they think the issues are?
We're going to declare this is approved. Okay. Do you have a question?
Yeah, this is Ann. I'm just curious to prove why some of the board members said no.
I think it's, I just think it's an incomplete plan.
I concur and I don't have confidence in that it's going to be met after tonight. That was Meredith.
What's, what's not going to be met? Is that, is that 24 and 8?
No, it just, it just sounds like things are evolving, um, what this is going to be and where the cars are going to be. I, I think that there could be a better layout, maybe bubbles, um, but it just seems like it's a little too loose for my comfort level.
This is getting ridiculous, guys. I mean.
Well, either way, we have an approval.
It's been approved, Mike.
Yeah.
Now, anything further, board, if you'd like to do two or four of the seven?
Make a motion that the chairman and one.
Sorry, go ahead.
I make a motion that the chairman and one other member of the board sign the milars when they're presented to the, the town planning department.
Motion's been made. The chairman, other member of the board signed the milars when presented to the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay. We picked on the secretary last time. We'll give her a break here now. This isn't too controversial. Hi?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion first.
All right. You all set, Mike?
Yes, thanks. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to hang up now.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, bye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
The next item on the agenda for this evening is Arrowhead Meadows. Do we have one of those?
Yes, I believe Travis is still among us.
Yep. Yeah, this is Travis. Can you still hear me?
Phil can hear you.
All right. Can you, you know, let me share my screen again or did I, uh, lose that privilege last time?
Well, I'm not letting you do that, but I think you gotta, gotta make sure you're hitting the record button on the meeting because you have control. So just want to make sure.
All right, good. Yep. I, I see that it's being recorded now, so I'll, I'll verify that it keeps going.
Okay.
Tell us the story.
All right, so what do I have to do? Do I have to give you the?
Give me the power.
All right, just got to remember how I did that now.
All right. All right. And it's still, it's, yeah.
Hold on, you're right. I don't think that looks right.
I'm viewing your screen. Yep, yep.
Okay, uh, I'm going to make you a co-host. That'll take care of it.
There you go. That's perfect.
Yep. Now I'll see if you can share the screen.
All right. Yes, I, yeah, I can. Yep. All right.
Okay, I see it. Yep.
All right. All right, Travis Mitchell with Environmental Design Partnership here to review the Arrowhead Meadows, uh, project. Mary Beth Slevin is also on the line. Uh, I believe she's an attorney that's helping me with the project. Uh, this is the overall, um, uh, map of Google Earth. You can see the, uh, the site outlined in red there. It's about a 22, 22 acre site. Um, you can see in the dashed line to the left is, uh, this for reference is, is Route 9. We've got to the, to the north of the project is Bluebird Road. There's front to John Bluebird. And then to the west is Gansford Road. The town zoning map here, um, general site location pointed at the tip of the arrow. If we zoom in to the, uh, to the outline of the site, you can see we're partially within, um, the R1 and partially within the R2 zone, the majority of the site being in the R1 zone. This is the overall subdivision plan that, uh, that we submitted that you have, um, showing, uh, 44 lots. Again, split between the R1 and R2 zone. Um, I'm going to jump to a, a Google Earth image of that, uh, getting some feedback there, Jim. Are you also? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you fine. We're not getting any feedback here.
Okay, great. All right, I'll keep going. Um, this is the overall subdivision plan shown on Google Earth. This is, um, we submitted in early, uh, December, attended your December meeting. These preliminary plans have not changed since that, uh, since that, uh, submittal in December. Uh, we did have, um, a good discussion during that December meeting on a few, a few issues that I'm going to step through. Uh, I'll step through those now. Um, one of those was a discussion on a, a combined traffic study. So you know, there's this project in front of you, a neighboring, um, uh, 40 lot subdivision that's, uh, that's been, uh, a neighboring 40 lot subdivision that's, that's been being moved forward and also a project to the south, another roughly 50 units or so. And the planning board had, had requested that we take a look collectively at, at traffic among all the projects that are actively pursuing approvals. And so we, we had prepared a traffic study for you that was, that was included in that December submittal. We did go back to the traffic engineer and ask them to update it to include all, all the projects collectively. And that, that has been resubmitted to you. You can see in my screen now, there's, there's four different intersections that are highlighted that they specifically looked at, the traffic engineer that is. One's Route 9 and Bluebird Road, Bluebird Road and Gansvert Road, and Bluebird Road and Fort Edward Road up here, and then Gansvert and Route 197. The, the traffic engineer also took a look at, at required site distances from our proposed entrances. Site distance that we have meet or exceed any of the requirements. And the traffic study concluded that, that the combined effect of the projects would, would not have a, a collective impact on, on lowering the level of service of the intersections in the area. I, I do expect that the, the, the town and the planning board will push this to their consultant that the town uses. Jim and I had spoke about this a little bit for reviewing these traffic studies. So I'm not sure that that's happened yet, but I, I expected that well before we're, before we're done here. Let's see, another discussion that we had at the last meeting was how to deal with seeker, considering that we have multiple projects that are in one stage or another in front of the planning board. And while we agree, you do need to look at the impacts of, of these projects collectively as they may impact each other. You do need to consider a separate seeker action for each of them as they are each their own application. So what I've done to help you with that is, well, first of all, the, the traffic study that we submitted, as you requested, we've updated that to include, include all the projects. And then in our description, and wherever appropriate within our seeker long form, we've made reference to other neighboring projects in some form of approval. Another point of discussion at our December meeting was just how the Arrowhead Meadows project and the SRH TJM subdivision would, would work together because they are, they are so connected, I guess, if you will. And so we provided you with an overall map that shows the cross easements between the two projects, how each of those projects could be constructed independently of the other. So for instance, the, the purple on this map shows an easement over the Arrowhead project to the benefit of the SRH TJM. And likewise, the green on this map is an easement over the SRH TJM project to the benefit of Arrowhead. And so they share a, a road network that works together. And for instance, if the Arrowhead Meadow project that we're talking about tonight, to the, to the north or on the top of the page, if that one were to be constructed first, there would be an easement in this area to allow us to construct the road at both the entrances and begin the waterline connection loop through here and, and other utilities that make sense to, to, to take a look at as we begin, begin construction. Another point of discussion that we had was on stormwater, and that's what, one of the things that this easement does is that the stormwater that comes through the Arrowhead Meadows project, some of it is treated in storm basins in this general vicinity. There's, there's, there's no prohibition against that. And it, it's something that, that can be done with the proper easements in place, which, which we're showing you we, we can do. Well, yeah, we had talked about different options for mail distribution. So in, in, the, the post office has in general moved toward centralized mail distribution facility. And we've shown a couple of different options on where that might be. But I've also heard that recently they may be moving back toward individual mailboxes. So that's something in the very near future we'll take a look at with the post office. But we've basically shown you all three potential options. That is centralized distribution in two different locations or, of course, traditional mailboxes. I'm also in receipt here this past week of notes from, from Jim Martin as he stepped through his, steps through his standard checklist on different, different requirements for the project. In general, we're, we're compliant with most of the, the basic requirements. I have highlighted a few things just to touch on quickly. The discussion on street names, I know I've got to get you some street names. Also, the, the, the mail distribution mechanism, whether it be central or, or distributed through the site, we'll take a look at that. And there's a larger discussion that Jim referenced in his memo here on centralized sewer. I, you know, I'd, I'd really like to be able to talk about centralized sewer to the, to the project. As, as you know, that's something that we've looked at 10 years ago and had, had, had considered and really wanted to move it forward. Unfortunately, they're just, there isn't a practical way to do it financially and make this project work. So that, that's why we've proposed what we have on, on municipal water and onsite wastewater disposal systems. A few other highlights on the fourth page of Jim's internal staff notes here. Of course, confirmation from the town's highway department on, on the road network. That's, that's certainly something that we'll look to, to gain, gain comments on. Also, comments from the town's water superintendent, something that, that will also work with Jim to, to make sure we obtain. I think the last one to touch on before I turn it over to you for, for questions is discussion over connectivity to the, the nearby town park. This project does not have any, any frontage or access directly to the park. So that's something that's not in, not within the, the ability of this project to provide a, a direct access other than, you know, you know, your typical road network to, to the town park. As far as the approval process goes, of course, we were before you in late December, back in front of you now to take a look at the preliminary plat review. We did submit those detailed drawings in early December, which I, I know Jim has pushed out to LeBerge for their stormwater review, which I presume is, is ongoing. We should have comments soon. Again, the review by the town department is ongoing. Tonight, we would hope to get the county referral moving forward. Initiate seeker coordinated review, and if the board is, is comfortable with it, talk about scheduling a public hearing for the preliminary plat review. So with that, I'll turn it over for questions. Jim, do I need to relinquish control, or can I leave it up?
No, I think you can leave it up because we have a, the co-host option this time. I should have done that before, so I think we're, I think we're good.
All right. All right, thank you.
Okay, Travis. Travis, I have a couple of quick ones.
Sure.
Question number one, and, and this may be more towards Jim. Is that accurate to say that our code allows for the stormwater from a subdivision to be treated on another parcel offsite?
I think it can, but there has to be the proper structure to support that, meaning proper easements and that type of thing written into, to the deeds to, to allow for those uses to occur specifically. So I think it can. We have the benefit of Carla being on as well. So maybe she can also chime in on that. But from my standpoint, I think it can. So the answer for me is, I think is yes.
Okay.
As long as it's properly structured.
Yeah, and Jen, I, I think one of the discussion last time about not allowing stormwater to be treated on a neighboring parcel. You know, there is a, a question in the, in the NOI application about offsite discharge of stormwater, but it's more along the lines of, of ensuring that it's properly treated and managed.
Of course.
It doesn't preclude, yeah, it doesn't preclude working with a neighboring property for the treatment.
Yeah, and I mean, I guess that's my thing is I don't think I have a problem with it as long as there is a contingency in place that it is going to be handled. It isn't just dumping it on another property. All right, so with that in mind, I get that, I get that your connection to the park with your particular development is a point on a map. Because there's a corner there where they attach. So I guess my question is, is there any reason why we can't have a stipulation put into the plans that a, a connection to Jacoby North's corner be allowed for in your plan? A trail of some type that allows access through there, and then when Jacoby North comes in front of us again, we can ask them to allow access across their property to the park from your development?
Well, you know, we have homeowners association land around the perimeter of the, of the site as you've, you know, as we've talked about before. But, you know, I, it's, it's not my place to ask or to compel another property owner to, to allow access across their site.
The great thing is, is I'm not asking you to ask them to do that. I'm asking you to have in your plan the stipulation that you would be able to provide access to that if, if it was allowed, if it was part. I'll be happy to want, to be the one that asks Jacoby North to do that.
There's, there's, there's homeowners association lands around, around the perimeter of this that, that we can work into, you know, into different things. If, if, you know, if that's the direction the board asks us to go. Yep.
Okay, but I guess what I'm saying is I'd like it to be on the plan that that access would be a lot, an allowable use of the HOA lands.
Sure. I understand what you're saying, and yeah, yeah.
And then, and in all honesty, I will, I personally will ask Jacoby North, if, if that comes in front of us again, I will ask them to do the same thing. What happens in, in regards to that afterwards is, is out of my control, Andrewors. It's just a matter of if we allow the opportunity and we ask the town to provide an accessway there, it might keep some kids from riding bicycles on Route 32. Or Bluebird Road for that matter.
Yep.
I'm in strong support of that position, John.
Yeah. If we could see that, if we could see that on a print, Travis, just roughed in or, or, you know, some kind of, you know, conceptual path, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, well, as. Yeah.
Yeah, and you, you could only do what you can do, and you would show it to Jacoby. And then we'll turn on and ask the same thing of Jacoby North into the park.
Yep, yep. Point taken. I'll, I'll. We'll, we'll, we'll make that happen on our, on our HOA lands.
Thank you.
So I think, Travis, you said something about they're talking now about moving back to individual mailboxes?
Yeah, you know, it, I had, in projects that we've done in our office over the last five or six, seven or eight years, it's been centralized facilities. But I did hear a comment just within the last few weeks that, that the postmaster in this area was, was still in favor of, of traditional mailboxes. I have not personally explored it on this. It's certainly something that we will do, but either way, it's whatever the postmaster says is what we're going to have to do, so.
Right. Do you think in, in the case of this particular project that the school will be running a bus in to pick up kids in this development, or do you think that they'll be asking for a location out by the road?
I, I would think that they would run through. I mean, there, there's, there's no, ultimately, there's no dead ends in here, and it's going to be town road that's looped through. So I would think that they would run through, but it, as a, yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
It's, it's going to be a normal subdivision. There's probably no reason why they wouldn't get it, I don't think.
Okay, and that's what, that's what I would expect. I just wanted to check and see if.
Yep. That's, that would be my understanding as well.
Because I know, I think it's at the, the apartment complex down on Bluebird and Fort Edward Road. I think it's Bluebird Village. I believe they pick up at the roads there, right?
Yeah, typically on the apartment complexes, they would be private internal roads, so they would, they would not generally travel those, those roads.
See, now that makes all the sense in the world. I probably should have known that. Okay, thank you.
Anything further, more?
Good question, Travis. Are you guys running all eight inch water mains now, or six inch? Just, just out of curiosity, for my own.
Sorry, Mike. What, what was the question, Mike?
Are you running mostly eight inch water mains now on these subdivision like this, in these size, instead of six inch?
Yeah, so eight, eight, eight would be the minimum, yes.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. Just, just for my own information. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, there's, there's water existing on Route 32 and also on Bluebird Road. So, you know, the, the, the nice thing about these working together is there's no dead ends. You know, they're all, everything gets looped through eventually.
That's, that's good. Thank you.
Yep, yep.
Good. Just to clarify, this has been submitted to our consultants.
For the SWP so far, we have, we have a lot of work yet to do with the highway. We have to send it on the highway, we have to send it on the Jesse, it's water. But the SWP review has been.
Okay, and I assume the water is probably.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
And can we, how, how does that affect for the first, for the traffic study?
We, we need authorization to create, you know, the escrow and, and make, reach out in that fashion.
Jim, are the engineers approving the water system, or do you?
Usually Jesse can reduce it for the water.
That's out of the line of where I'm here?
Typically, no. Add some of the size. Yeah, that's correct. Jesse reviews these.
Okay, that's too controversial. I have a motion to forward this application, application to our traffic consultants for their review.
And also creation of an associated escrow.
Go ahead, a motion.
This is Meredith. I'll make the motion.
Finally, great. Motion's been made.
Long Monday.
Submit the traffic study for consultancy review by the town. Tell the motion. I have a second.
I'll second.
Motion's made. Second. Does he further discussion? If not, this one is really not too controversial. I've picked on the secretary enough tonight. All is better, right? Motion carried. Thank you. Terrence Fairplay. Travis, do you have any questions of us?
Uh, yeah, do, do you think you've got enough information to get coordinated reviews started?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, can I pop in now? I am still here.
Sure, Jim. Anytime.
This is, this is Carla. Hi, Travis.
Hi, Carla.
Um, I, I wanted to just advise the board of a couple of things on the, on the project. I did speak with your attorney earlier today, so she's aware of what, what's going on. With respect to seeker, I am in agreement that the seeker should be separate for each of these projects. So I thank you, Travis, for submitting the part one on the seeker. Because of that, we would want the planning board to declare lead agency and start coordinated review if the planning board desires to do that moving forward. The, one of the other questions I do have, and I did speak with counsel earlier about this today, is the answer on your part one discusses that you're not going to go into the sewer district. And I believe that you had conversations with Don Rhodes last week with respect to the cost of that. I, I don't think you have all of the information. I don't think the full analysis has been done yet to make a determination that it is cost prohibitive at this point. The town wants to work with you to move forward, to connect to the sewer, and I do think that. that further inquiries and further investigation should be done between, and I'm happy to coordinate that with you Travis or with Mary Beth, to move forward on that. I just don't think there's, I don't think you have all of the information, and I think there might have been a miscommunication at some point, so I do think that that's something that we shouldn't take off the table.
Sure, so I I certainly wouldn't want to take that off the table, but you know, I have, I have pursued it in the past, and we did have discussions over the last few weeks, and I just, it isn't something that that, you know, and maybe I was presented wrong information, and that's, you know, I'm still willing to listen, but I just don't want that to hold this up, you know, I'm certainly, you know, if it's available and it's cost and it's, you know, financially workable, I'd be absolutely would be willing to make that happen.
And I think it wasn't that you were given misinformation, it's just that I don't know if it was explained properly or the full analysis has gone through with respect to it, so.
Sure.
I, I, yeah, I'm glad to hear that you don't want to take that off the table altogether, but I wanted the board to be aware.
We've, we've, we've tried, we've, we've tried for 10 years to to figure something out there, so I.
Oh, I know.
It's something I would certainly be open with, certainly open to, I just, you know, I, at some point, we've got to keep it moving forward.
Understood, understood, I just want to make sure that that you're aware of that, and that the board is aware of that.
Yep.
As well, and I think those are the issues that, not the issues, but the the points I wanted to bring up, Mr. Chairman, on this, and I think I was gonna bring up the traffic study with the escrow, and I know that you already just, you did that. And so we would, I would be fine with going forward and just declaring lead agency and doing the coordinated review, knowing that we're gonna do a separate seeker for each, for this, for Arrowhead, and then a separate one, and I know it it's kind of odd because it almost seems like a phased project, one project, but they're two separate projects. It may be cumbersome, but under seeker, we'd have to do that. And that's all I would have to say, so I'll be quiet now unless anybody has any questions.
Carla, can you? Jump in anytime.
Carla, could you give a little bit more information on what the process is for the coordinated review?
Sure, the town, the the planning board would declare lead agency tonight, then we would go through and submit letters, you know, interested agency letters to DOH probably, whoever's listed on the EAF that Travis has listed on there, they have 30 days to say whether or not they want, they're okay with us being lead agency, we'd be, usually, they either don't respond or they respond within a couple weeks saying, we don't really care, you guys go ahead and do it. We would go ahead and do that, and then you'd be able to finalize your seeker review through a part, a part two and a part three review. It also does have to go to county planning.
And if it is a separate seeker review for each of these subdivisions, we still have to take into account, don't we, the others?
Without a doubt, with without a doubt, and Travis did indicate that, that even though there's separates, even though there's separate seeker reviews and there're separate reviews for each of the subdivisions, they have to take into account what they know, and they know that there are these other subdivisions that are before the town board. So they'll have to take into account the 137 other houses and how that would come into, just like they took into account with the traffic study. So they have to identify it and they have to take that into account. So it does, like, like I said, it sounds cumbersome, but they would have to do that each individually.
Okay, and Travis, just one question for you, do you have any kind of proposed construction projection for this subdivision being built out and its partner?
Yeah, so I could speak to this one specifically, and, you know, we're January now, by the time we go through and finish these approvals and and get maps filed, we'd be the late summer, early fall, so this would be a 2022 construction project, I would say.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe late 2021, but more likely spring of 2022.
Okay, and you're not sure about Arrowhead?
This, this one's Arrowhead, so the SRHTJM, I, I'm not sure, but it wouldn't be too far behind, I wouldn't expect.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Just on the lead agency, just so all the members here, in your agreement, Travis listed four state agencies, DEC, DOH, DOT, and the Attorney General, because we have the formation of a homeowners association, and additionally, I would say County DPW, and as a courtesy, we send it to the county planning office as well, although they're just referring, you see they're not, we don't have any permit, any issue, but.
Do we have a Department of Health in there?
Yes.
DOH?
Yeah.
Tech dot dou, Sarah, Sarah Tony, attorney, referral, we need to send one to the school district.
Yep.
Because this could definitely impact those buildings, so they need to admit where it's coming from.
That's six.
What would be the D?
Is that, is that part of the sewer district, being that it's going up, part of the sewer district, it's going up Bluebird Road? It's not in it right now, no, we have to. But it's front. Yes.
Well, this is, this is, I'll pop in again, I'm sorry, Jim, that's one of the things that we're talking about and that we're gonna keep talking with the applicant about, is that we're looking, ultimately, it would be beneficial for everyone if they could create a sewer district extension, and then what would happen is each of the projects would hopefully create a sewer district extension, and then ultimately, the sewer districts would all be, all the sewer districts in the town would be consolidated, that's kind of the the plan going forward. In order to do, in order to do that, just so the board is aware, if the applicant is able, is agreeable, and we can do a sewer district extension, we'll have to resurrect the map plan report or create a map plan report, the applicant will have to do that, submit that to the town board, the town board is the board that has the jurisdiction to approve the map plan report in the sewer district. So before you could have your approvals on on your end, they'd have to go to the town board, get their approvals, and come back here. It's not a real lengthy process, it would just be, you know, they'd have to go through a public hearing like they would on this, but it could be done in a few months, if that's something that we are able to move forward with. It doesn't really delay things a whole lot on this.
Is the town board aware of that?
The town board aware of what? That they have, that this is going on?
And they're trying to, is the town board the one trying to get a two word consent?
No, it's, it's more of the the part of the comprehensive plan for the town to have, you know, everyone in the town who is able to get into the sewer district, it benefits the town residents to have everyone within a sewer, within the sewer district and connected to the sewer. So this is just one of the things.
I bet I'm all, no. I wish they'd hook it to my house. I've had something, I have that story, everyone prefers sewer.
I have a quick question, what, I I understand DOH and and county, and all, why DEC?
Yeah, it's in HON.
Yeah.
They're involved in the SWIP.
Okay.
Stormwater, I mean, they're, one way or another, we always have DEC.
Okay. They're DEC.
Yeah, I just got, well, no, I just got hung up, I saw DEC, and I'm like, there's no wetlands that I can think of on this site.
No, fortunately, yep, good question, though.
Do we have any threatened or dangerous species, all that's part of the site?
There's a lot of general clearinghouse as well.
Okay, all right, I should know that, but sorry.
Okay.
The other question I have for you Travis is soil types here, as far as for for septic engineering.
Mm-hmm.
These soil types are, I'm guessing, fast?
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're typical Moreau sand, it's, we've, on one of the, one of the maps are are a couple dozen anyway, test pits and percolation tests that have been done out there.
Yeah, okay.
Part of this, yep, yep.
Okay, boy, as you've heard the recommendation from council, that we declare lead agency will need to formally declare ourselves, I have a motion for the planning board to assume the role of lead agency for the seeker review for Arrowhead metal subdivision.
So moved.
Scared, was it Eric?
No, that was me, I was waiting.
Okay, motion been made for second.
Make a second.
Motion been made and seconded for the planning board to tell them to roll the role, assume the role of lead agency and the environmental assessment review for Arrowhead metal subdivision, that one is not too controversial, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carried.
Travis, could you, could you get me, could you give me two more paper copies of the plan set for Jesse and Paul?
Sure, yes, absolutely.
And then if you could give me one, the entire set on a jump drive or a couple jump drives to that would be good for the county.
Sure. Yep. Got it. Would, would the board consider getting started with the public hearing, getting that scheduled?
Have a back from any of the consultants, you got anything sort of premature?
I, I think, my, it's something, obviously, but I, I would prefer one more month to let this go a little, with the coordinated review and the, and like you said, the consultants hearing back from, I had to even contact with Peter Fahey to get an estimate and all that kind of thing, so.
I think we should, yes.
We'll have a lot more information.
Yep.
Next one.
No, that's, that's, that's fair enough, yep, I appreciate it.
Travis, thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, guys.
All right, so.
Next item on our agenda, SRHTJM, as asked, has a request of an advocate that had been tabled, the next item we're having to be handed to the senior is Lee Horni, site plan review for 1496 Route 9, do we have one of those?
Lee, are you there? Lee? Lee, are you there?
She doesn't like this.
It's not sounding too good, I, I don't see.
How about now, can you hear it all?
Yeah, Lee, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Okay, very good, thank you. Um, what I'm proposing is, is a building on 1496 Route 9, which is currently residential in a commercial zone, and I would like to take this structure and turn it into a commercial rental space. Because see on the site plan, I've done some improvements to the site, I still have, I have a drywall for the, for the parking area, which I hope the blacktop come warmer weather. I put the access ramp to the front door with shrubbery around the front of it, I've put a abreviated fence between my property and the bar restaurant just north of that. I have located the existing septic tank, put access holes in them, and located the existing leach pit, which all seem to be fine as far as I can see. I've added some proposed additions out back to the building, and also a structure out back, which the tenant would need it, I could, you know, build those, which I doubt would happen. I'm looking to rent this place for for professional offices or insurance agent or specialized retail, like an art studio, kitchen cabinet, places like that, where they don't have walking customers, most of them are calling people. That, and I have a sign proposed out front for advertising, and I think that it covers it.
I have to say, that was the most condensed little site plan I ever saw, but it didn't have everything on it. It looked really nice down there when he did to that house.
Thank you.
It was very good, excellent job.
People love it.
Oh, I do, when I went by it, I saw it, I know, that's pretty neat. I have no problem with this. And the, and the, not a flaw consideration, but it is a nice, more interesting, going to a conforming. You're not gonna put tow trucks or dump trucks or anything like that in there, are you?
What's that again?
Did I have any like tow trucks or dump trucks or anything like that, are you?
No, I hope not, I don't see how they'd get in there.
Okay. That's kind of an inside shot. Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
Would you have, is that existing?
What's that again?
Would you have a leach pit, is that an existing one?
Yes, that's the original pit.
Okay.
And I, I, I put a camera down there and it seemed to be fine in there.
We can't walk if it's already there. Okay. Now, what is proposed here? Do we need seeker on this one?
No, we do not, it's a, it is a hectare action, 104,000 square feet.
Lee, this is Ann Plidoo, can you tell us the dimensions of the existing building?
Um, it is 33 long by, I think, 25 deep. It has 800 square feet of usable space inside.
Okay, and what are the total number of parking spaces, you're proposed six?
Six, yes. I contemplated three or maybe four for employees, and then another one or two for walking customers.
Jim, does that number of spaces work?
Um, I didn't check it because I wasn't sure what what the uses were gonna be, they were so wide ranging, for office space, I believe that would work.
But for retail, they would need a couple more spaces.
I, I think so, yes.
Would it depend on the retail? I don't, I don't think a, a walk-in place, you know, like the, like the thrift shop or something like that, people just browsing would work there, this doesn't seem to work along Route 9.
Yeah, I tend to think, given the layout of this, and it just, it looks to me like a small office to me, but I said that, now the first thing would win the retail.
Yeah, like, I could always add a couple more spaces out in the rear, there's plenty of room for it.
That was my other observation, it did seem to have an expansion room there as well.
It's kind of what I was gonna suggest, is I, I get where this is going, and it might be better for you to just allow for spaces for the maximum necessary for whatever use you're proposing or or potential use. That way, it's all just on the plan and it's set one way or the other.
This is Meredith, I agree, and I wouldn't want you to lose your turnaround ability because.
Oh, no.
And these, these buildings that do not yet exist for future storage and then proposed expansion, I think you'd have to come back to us for that.
Um, I wouldn't mind that.
And is that correct, or do we, is there some way we can deal with this today without knowing what it's gonna, if it's ever gonna exist?
I mean, I prefer to have it come back, it's hard to predict.
Okay.
I concur.
Does this seem one zone?
Yes.
So the proposal is to create, for want of a better word, a shopping center, if you will, so it's not going to be individual businesses, the proposal, which you are proposing to rent spaces, so everything going on in this lot is one entity? to rent spaces. So everything that's going on in this lot is one entity?
Lee, did you hear that?
No, I didn't understand. I'm sorry.
It, is, is the proposal to have one tenant or multiple tenants?
No, just one tenant.
Well, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go back to our parking thing, quick calculation of the 33 by 25 comes up with an 825 square foot area. So if this was used for maximum use, say for retail, how many parking spaces would we need for that? And I think we may already have enough.
I'm looking, John.
I think it was like one parking space for 200 square feet or something like that. And if that's the case, we already have enough. And room for a couple of employees to boot.
Well, retail store is one space for 100 square feet, and an office building is one space for every 300 square feet of gross floor area.
So we're a couple of spaces shy if we decide to, uh, go retail on this.
Yeah, and you have more than enough of the office.
So might behoove us to just draw in a couple of more spaces on our plan. And then we, if it does go retail, there's no need for Mr. Horning to have to come back and, and get a change of site plan.
That's correct.
Would it be possible that if I do retail, add the two spots afterwards?
I mean, I still. We could, as long as you designate on the site plan where they could be, you don't have to build them necessarily, but you do have to leave that spot available for that.
You, 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 you could show a parking expansion area in the event of retail use.
That's a great way to word it.
Um, what's the permissible width on a, on a, on a, a space for a car? Nine feet?
Our code says, our code says that the parking space has to be 200 square feet. We ask for 10 by 20.
Oh, you, okay, you go by square footage. All right.
But we like 10 by 20. We all drive pickups.
Yes.
Don't come in with nine by 22.
No, please don't. It's actually nine by 23, but don't do that either.
I don't mind, I don't mind showing another two spaces on there. I just don't want to blacked out the whole area. That's all.
Nobody says you have to do it right now. If you have a commercial land, if you have a crop tenant, then you may have to. If you don't, you live with what you have. Don't change it until you need to.
Exactly.
Okay.
Which is showing on the provision score in case of.
Just look at that, the sign, the four foot by three foot sign. Would you just be better off saying sign location? He's going to have to go in and get that approved anyway, right?
Yeah, that's a separate permit, yeah.
Other than that, it looks good. The, the site looks really nice. You've done a really good job of that. I know that was set prior. I'd agree.
I agree too. Driving by it every day. The last year, seen, wondering what's going on.
Okay, do you want to send Mr. Horning back to your next bus? Do you want to schedule a public hearing? Or do you want to?
Let's schedule the public hearing. Meredith will make the motion to schedule the public hearing at the February meeting.
Okay. Motion's been made. We have a public hearing for Lee Horning at 1484 Route 9 for next, maybe February. To the motion, we have second.
Second.
Motion. Motion's been made and seconded from Paul and Harry for Lee Horning project, a site plan review at 1484 Route 9. Motion's been made seconded. That's not too controversial. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So Lee, it looks like the only thing I, I'm hearing is, um, showing a parking expansion area for retail use on your plan.
Okay.
For next one.
And should I, um, eliminate that four by three on the sign? The size of the sign?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You can just say sign add, add per permit requirements.
Okay.
And I think you also want to, um, eliminate those future expansions, the future storage and then the, uh, expansion, the existing building.
Yeah.
That's all right with me.
Yeah, and then just come back for them if you decide to do them later.
Yes. You'd have to anyways.
Okay, turn about 10 o'clock. Mr. Horning, do you have any further questions of us? I guess not.
No.
Okay.
Nobody wants to answer.
Well, hearing that, Carla, thank you for joining us this evening.
Anytime.
Happy birthday to your husband.
No, oh, thank you. I will let him know that. If he's still awake, he might be asleep downstairs.
If he's smart, he's asleep.
Right. Or he's doing work for DOH.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Hey, Jim.
Thank you.
Hey, Jim.
Yeah.
Uh, this is John Arnold. Um, the, the, Lee Horning had a really nice map here showing our, our, uh, tax parcels, all right, and where the, the location of his property was. Uh, this is something, there's something on that map that I've been asking to have cleared up for a while, and nobody seems to move on it. If you look out, um, in the southern end of that, out in what's our R5 agricultural zone, you're going to see a parcel that's colored in with orange and listed as commercial. I'm not sure why. It's farmland right next to me and it's not in the commercial zone. But I've been told it's because it's something to do with, there's a signboard on it and it's being taxed as commercial or something.
Well, if you notice in the legend of this map, this is the, um, land use classification by how the assessor has classified it.
Okay.
So you'd have to, that should be taken up with the assessor. It's not, it's certainly not zoned for that, but that's how the classification lists on the, uh, assessment records.
Yeah, I just can't understand why. I mean, it, somebody said it's because there's a signboard associated with that property, but there's four signboards associated with the one out, uh, to the west of it, and that isn't listed as commercial.
Yeah, that shouldn't, that shouldn't, if I understand how the classification works, that shouldn't be the basis for, for that classification.
Yeah, that's kind of my thing.
Reflect the current use.
Yeah, so I didn't know, I think, I, I didn't know if that was something that you could look into.
I can. I, I'll be in tomorrow. I'll take it up with Leah.
I hate to have somebody look at that and say, hey, look at that nice piece of commercial land out there. That's all. Thank you. You have a good night.
Okay. Speaking of old West Road, has anybody been by the Z-Far Brewery lately?
Slow go up there.
Yeah, it looks nice though. They put the siding up.
Yeah. I, um, I got an email from her like two or three weeks ago because she thought she'd lost my cell phone number, wanted to talk to me about local issues. I gave her the number, no response. And then a week later, I asked if there was anything in particular, and she said, no, she just wondered if there was anything she should know about. I don't know what that is. So I left it at that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, we're gonna need a motion to adjourn.
We have not quite adjourned yet.
Yes.
Mr. Horning, forward, Mr. Horning, sir, don't count it. Cause that definitely is on Route 9.
Yeah, yes.
Very good.
I've already been done, I'll make sure.
I have exhausted everything in my hand. We have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made for second.
I'll second it then.
Motion's been made second. Any further discussion?
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Abstentions? Motion carries.
Good night.
Good night, guys.